This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, July the, July 21st. Please stand for an invocation led by Pastor Marvin Lou Jr., Stewart Memorial CME Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're grateful, our God, for this day. We thank you for life, especially in times such as these. As we assemble today, Lord, we pray that you will allow inclusion. We pray that you will allow insight. We pray that you will allow your Spirit of instruction to guide us as we deliberate over the affairs of this your city. We speak counsel to the council. We speak wisdom to the council. We speak consideration and love and unity, not only to the council, but to our city. We speak it done in the name of justice. We speak it done in the name of oneness. We speak it done in the name of the one who has given us freedom above all that we can ask or think. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
But before we would sit, we'd have a couple of moments of silence, and we want to recognize Councilman Joel Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, our country lost a great American, John Lewis. Since the very beginning of our country, we have relied on men and women who love freedom. Those men and women helped us win our independence. Those men and women fought a cruel civil war in order to abolish the scourge of slavery. Those men and women fought two world wars in the 20th century to keep our country free and to bring freedom to others who had been oppressed and conquered. John Lewis, although he didn't wear a uniform, he was a freedom fighter, and he devoted his life to the cause of freedom and justice. So it's appropriate that we honor that great American, John Lewis. Thank you, Mr. President.
And in addition to the great John Lewis, we would also like to recognize the late Reverend Cordy Tindall Vivian, C.T. Vivian, a lieutenant of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., is a comrade of Congressman John Lewis's, and a great American in his own right, a freedom fighter in every respect, consummate minister, and he passed the same day as Congressman Lewis, so we lost two great and brave Americans on that same day. So if we could, yes, sir?
It is also, as said, a heavy heart that I bring to the attention of the council and ask for prayers for those who knew and loved Oscar H. Lipscomb, Bishop Emeritus of the Catholic Church in Mobile Diocese. Died on July 15th after a long battle with illness. We pray for him as well. Thank you.
Let us observe moments of silence in memory of those three great Americans.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We first would ask that you would turn off or silence all electronic devices upon entering the council meeting. Any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that you clearly state for the record both your name and your address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact City Clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 P.M. The subject must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hadn't given that proper notice to the Clerk's office will not be allowed to address the council on a non-agenda item. Speakers are granted five minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes, and then another bell will sound to let you know that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself, who serves as chair, and who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we are appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of June 14th.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Communications from the mayor's office.
All right.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for away with the noise ordinance on August 23rd at Michael C. Dow Amphitheater and August 22nd on Foster Lane.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezone property at 1073 Bernice Hudson Drive, south side of Bernice Hudson Drive, 194 feet west of Quigley Street, from R1 and R2 to R1.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Again, anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structure at 1040 Dolphin Island Parkway Lot 1, a public nuisance, and order it demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structure at 1040 Dolphin Island Parkway Lot 4 and Lot 6, ordering them a public nuisance and ordering them secured or demolished, secure slash demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at 1050 Woodlawn Drive East and Woodlawn Drive West, public nuisances, and ordering them secured or demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Theodore Arthur Jr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In the wonderful presence of God, I came to represent the African Town descendants and let you know who I am. Most people don't know me, so this is my chance to let you know that. I'd like to say many thanks to Mayor Sandy Stimson, the entire City Council, and the City Clerk. I came to let you know that there are some things going on in our community I think we should know about. First of all, let me establish my identity. Theodore Arthur Jr., 228 South Williams Avenue, Wichita, Alabama. I am the president of the African Town, direct descendants of the Cloat Tilda. Now, to make my point clear, I want y'all to know that Paulie Allen was my great-grandfather. His daughter, Julia Allen, was my grandmother. Okay? So from that point, I came to ask for some help for our community, the African Town community. We need to get some technical help to help us get some of this money that's floating around for everybody but the descendants. Now, I understand that million-dollar grants and half-million-dollar grants being given to people that have participated in projects pertaining to the descendants, but nothing has been done for the descendants. That concerns me, and it worries me deeply, because we know for sure that the descendants are the only slaves that can identify their original part of where they came from. Now, all my life, I've been told that they originated in, they homie, West Africa, and came to, came to America on a ship called the Cloat Tilda. So the Cloat Tilda has become a very popular entity in America today. There's a lot of money being given to people that have discovered it, and nothing has been given to us. I think it's time that we make some, some changes on that. We need to receive some of that money also. And so I'm here to ask for some technical, technical assistance in helping us to prepare the proper documents and get the proper help from the legislators and the people in Washington so they can consider us with some of that money, and still giving it to everybody else. I need to help my people. Okay? Ms. Sylvia and Dwarf came down here in 2007. She's the one that wrote the book about the African dream in Alabama. I'm not sure about the name, but she was the one. She came and interviewed the late Miss Beatrice Ellis and myself back in 2007. So we gave her quite a bit of information about the descendants, and she knew some of the people in Africa that were our relatives. So it made it quite official to me that we had an intricate part in what happened with that book. But now they didn't share any of the proceeds or anything with us, so that doesn't bother me, because I'm asking for it from the United States right now. And Mobile is being asked to help us get our just due. All right? That's on that subject. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, this is 54 years I've been a part of this music in Mobile, Alabama. Okay? I have two subject matters on the agenda, so the other one is about the community activities. All right? This makes 54 years I've been playing music in Mobile with the Excelsior Band. 62 years I've been a professional musician. So we have had to join a partnership with Mobile recently to continue the community activities program. I don't mind that, but what I do mind is that the marketing has not been there. We don't have any students like we used to. I had overflow classes at Pillings and LaFlore, Davison, where we had to run two programs in one day, there were so many participants. Now we don't have anybody hardly, and I'm concerned about that, because my income is derived from the amount of people that come. So for five months, I haven't had any money coming in. So right now, I'm hoping that I can get $50,000 from the city so I can continue to exist out here. Five long months without a penny coming in is a terrible way to live, and I mean, it hurts real bad. So I'm asking y'all to please help us keep this program alive. I have two students that finished from Davison.
Mr. Arthur, I think that was your time.
Okay, but I have two agendas on there, one for African Town and one for the community.
But you get one set of five minutes.
Okay, well, I hope y'all will consider what I said.
And look, we appreciate all the musical and icon here. I think everybody recognizes that. I would like to talk with you further about your concerns relative to African Town. I don't know of any specific resources that have been given out to residents. The funds that have been coming in so far have all been going toward the overall betterment of the community, building the African Town Center, building the Welcome Center, things of that nature. And I know that Mr. Nitro Henderson has been working really hard with some of the key groups in African Town, and I would love to get you all connected with your organization so that you could be at the table when we have these various meetings.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming down.
All right.
Mr. President, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, to Director Barber, citizens, stakeholders in Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 chemistry. I'm honored today to continue expressing my First Amendment rights as I thoroughly address matters pertinent to City of Mobile business. I will begin with the agenda items that I would like to express today. I hope that the council will approve 39-020 in respect for peaceful protests, though you wish to prevent citizens from speaking in this chamber. I hope that we will not allow the public streets to be succumbed to those same cowardly acts. 21-504, it lists structural repairs for Lad People Stadium, and I just want to state that I definitely hope that this is approved. This is long overdue, money well spent, I believe, but I just had a quick question. Has the facility name been changed or not? Because on the agenda, it's listed as Lad People Stadium.
That resolution was approved, but this was submitted prior to the approval of the name change, so that's why it's on here the way that it is.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Clerk, and I appreciate all the work from that office, the transparency. For 01-533, is that a part of the Tiger Grant, or is that from a different funding source?
01, what item again, Mr. Hill?
01-533, and I please ask that that time be held while they're searching.
If it has to do with Canal Street, it's probably part of Tiger Grant.
I can't hear whoever's speaking.
If it's dealing with, yes, it's Broad Street and Canal, I believe that is connected to the Tiger Grant. Yes, sir.
That's Tiger Grant funding, okay, thank you, sir. 08-534, I just want to say, as I've addressed before, if we can find, you know, money for additional equipment, we must be able to find resources for worthwhile public service initiatives that have never been supported by this body. And I also urge the council to approve 21-538. Recycling is extremely important in this area, and I believe that this is money well spent. Now, to the items that I signed up on on Thursday, and we each could argue about the rules here, because there's an agenda item speaker and a non-agenda item speaker. Now, there's no way for a non-agenda item speaker to specify what he's going to speak on on the agenda if you have to sign in at 2:00 on Thursday when the agenda doesn't come out till Friday. So I don't know how you're going to work that out, but I hope we'll see an answer to that in the Rules Committee meeting. Now, the first thing I wanted to, to look at was the City Council's involvement in the mayoral task force. So I just want to know, is there any certain expectations? Because we know the city, well, with the ZIBI Act rather, we understand that the City Council is the head body in this type of city, in this type of government. So I just want to know, does the council have any specific expectations for that, and if there's going to be a specific role that the council accepts or takes on while the initiatives are being put in place from the mayoral administration?
The task force initiative is one being headed up by Mayor Stimson. We expect to have a role in that. Exactly what that role is hasn't really been negotiated at this point, but it's an effort that he and his administration have had enough.
Thank you for your response. I would like to say that dealing with the budget, since we have our finance committee, chairman said that there's going to be a meeting coming up. I will save some of my questions for that time, but I will make this note here. I hope that we can find $1 million for public service contracts. These are grants for performances that have actually been done, data proven. This is something that needs to be done. As well, I hope that we can find the money for our public works employees who already had these funds appropriated, but for whatever reason have not been able to receive those funds. I'm hoping that in the budget, that's going to be there. I will have more specifics as we come towards the appropriate time. Dealing with African Town, I'm very thankful that Mr. Arthur brought up some of these questions, because we've seen transfer of land over the past four weeks. We've seen contracts that are put in place where thousands of dollars, even upwards to potentially millions of dollars, have been appropriated, and we have no answers as to who has been the representation in that specific community, who is actually doing the process and communications with the city. This is something that is very pertinent, I believe, to city business, because there hasn't been a community meeting out there since March. We have no information relative to what's going on, so I hope that someone will be able to provide that for me. Because my time is running short, I wanted to talk about specifically, no, that's the first bell, sir. I want to talk about specifically the COVID-19 partnerships moving forward. I think that we've seen that in particular communities, this has hit us a lot different. So I would hope that in the future, we'll be finding ways to eliminate food deserts, because we see that health is a concern. I hope they'll be working with our post-secondary local institutions to come up with healthy ways of living, actually advancing our resources and that. And then this body writes these letters all the time to the state legislator urging them to do this and that and the other. I hope that we will write a letter to urge them to eliminate the grocery tax. A lot of the people are not able to live healthily, because they can't afford the foods that are necessary. As well, our parks and recreation centers, though they've been closed so long, I hope that we can find ways to get the amenities in those places so that people can practice living healthily. I had an amazing conversation with the chief of police the Friday after the special meeting, and I gave y'all two days off, so I don't even understand why there's such a problem for us to come down here like this today, and we want to have Rules Committee meetings about people addressing this body, but we'll cover that another time. I'm hoping the chief, the chief was able to say that he was going to meet with me. I hope that we can get those public safety measures.
Rest your time, Mr. Hillary.
I will sign up again next week to finish my comments, and I hope that y'all will really consider citizens coming down, because that's pertinent business in City of Mobile. Thank you for your time, sir.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm here for.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave's and then Mr. Richardson.
I just want to make clear that the Finance Committee meeting on August 25th, I think it was we said it, that's a work session for the committee and the council. We will take public input and questions at the public hearing on the budget, which will be September 1st.
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I do have a concern. I think we are setting a precedent. If you notice, Mr. Hill does not have a mask on, and he notified us in advance that he was not going to wear a mask based on the governor's order. I believe what we're going to see, we're going to see people line up at that door to come in here without a mask, and they're going to declare that it's the governor's order, the reason they're doing that. I don't think nobody should be allowed in here, to stay in here without a mask. The health authorities claim that you can emanate the virus. The virus can leave your nose and stay in the room for two hours circling that room. So it's possible that one person can come in here, walk around in here, and while they're seated, the virus is just floating around to other people. Folks that want, that signed up to speak to us, and they want, and they don't want to wear a mask, let them come in that door, speak, and go back out the door. It's what I'm proposing, not to stay in here with a mask off. I'm with the governor. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't put one on, but don't expect to come around, let the folk with it off. If you want to drive your car, walk the street, then fine, but you can't come into a setting where everybody is sitting here talking about you going along with what the governor said. No. I'll tell you what you do. You go out to Costco and tell Costco that the governor said I could come in here and see if you get in there. You are not getting in without a mask. I think we need to be responsible. If we don't set a precedent for the citizen to come down here and address us, we're going to have an arena full of people, and nobody's going to have a mask on. And I think we are under obligations to take the appropriate action to ensure that those citizens who come down here to be in this meeting are going to be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and we will, I'm going to ask that everyone that's present would put their mask on. This virus is serious, and we're taking this serious, so much so that everyone in here, everyone up here, everyone down here has their mask on. And we're doing that not only to preserve ourselves, but to be respectful of others. There are persons here with underlying illnesses, and yet the business of the city needs to move forward. And so we're going to ask, if you're going to stay in the chamber, that you would put your mask on, Mr. Hill. But your virus can spread further than six, we don't know what none of us have. If you will, put your mask on, Mr. Hill. Mr. Hill, we're either going to ask that you would conform with the mask, or we're going to ask that you would excuse yourself. I'm trying to be as amenable as I can. Everyone else, do you need a mask? Are you in need of a mask? We will provide you one. Thank you so much, Ms. Mask, Nurse Mask.
We got a man.
Okay, so. Are you going to place the mask on, Mr. Hill?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mr. And that's all we're asking him to do.
He didn't have to be among other people.
I understand. I totally agree. We could, and I don't think we're being unreasonable.
For no reason or reason.
We're not being unreasonable now.
After the escort, Mr. Hill out in the auditorium.
Mayor City Clerk.
Irene Anton, 2202 Clinton Street, Mobile, Alabama. The Good Shepherd of Mobile, Alabama. It goes up. But anyway, I'm here because it's being introduced. My CIP money has been there for January 1918. You're supposed to be doing the streets, restriping the streets on Somerville and Clinton Street. You're supposed to be doing the streets, restriping the streets on Somerville and Clinton Street. They have restriped the street, which is yellow, to my driveway and as far as that have gotten. The sidewalks on the. Across the Somerville side going to the floor. They have the sidewalks for the kids and everything, and the street is whatever. Okay, on my side, the Clinton Street, is no sidewalks, no strips and nothing. The kids going to Holloway. They say they were doing it, and they have on there, it's incomplete. I talked to the mayor this morning. I caught him by his leg with my walking stick. He gave the project again to somebody else. I can't think of his name. Is it newly?
M- M- Ms. Anton?
Yes, sir.
Let, let me ask you, is, is what you're speaking on, what you signed in on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because it's, it's brought to my attention that it may be not be, it may not be in alignment.
But sir, it's the introduction, and there's no introduction because it has been there since July 19, whatever. It ain't 20, and it had been given to the mayor all of that time, and it couldn't be a introduction. It may be a continuation. And they're doing everything else but what's helping the kids now, sir. Am I right? Uh, uh, our council, uh, can I ask my councilperson a question?
Uh, n- no, no ma'am. If, if you have a question, you can ask.
Sir, may I, sir, may I ask my councilperson a, a question?
That, that really isn't allowed, Ms. Anton. If you have a question, ask the question, and if he wants to respond, he'll have that opportunity.
Okay, I had it wrong.
That's okay.
Okay, my councilperson had a letter, and he had done everything possible about it. So he wrote me a letter, told me to pass it on to the mayor, and that's what I did. Our junior mayor, I mean, uh, Matt, came out and looked and said he didn't see nothing. Wasn't nothing to see because it wasn't there. So now, I hope our councilperson.
M- Mr. Richardson?
Um, the issues that, um, Ms. Anton is referring to are real issues, but they are administrative issues. It's nothing that the council can do. Um, they're in charge of striping. Um, you know, we just not in charge of doing that. So is no, is, is no one here representing the administration that can address where they are with that or when they may be able to do that? It's not one person sitting down here. So it's, it's no way to get any information regarding the issues that you're concerned with because there's no one here from the administration?
Yes, sir. I have given it to the new person in the mayor's office this morning. He have it all, the information that has transpired up to this point. They're going to start back working on it, I hope. I'm through.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anton.
Ordinance is held over 39020, ordinance to amend the city's general noise, ordinance to add peaceful protest demonstrations and rallies as an exception.
Motion level one week.
Is there a second? Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
CIP resolutions held over 21511 and 21512. Authorized contract with Tindall Construction and authorizing contract with Cat Architect Group for Melavana Park and, um, Tindall Construction for Lawn Recreation Center flooring abatement and replacement.
Shall I move?
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a pass.
Resolutions held over 21504. Authorized contract with S.C. Stagner Contracting for Lab People Stadium Structural Repairs Phase 2. 01513 Authorized Small Cell Wireless Coal Attachment Agreement with New Singular Wireless doing businesses AT&amp;T Mobility. 01514 Authorized Intergovernmental Agreement with Mobile County to allow the 13th Judicial Court System to use portions of the Mobile Civic Center. 08515 Approved Purchase Order to Sprigger's Choice for Saad for the Parks Department. 08516 Approved Purchase Order to Gray Bar Electric for LED Street Lighting Luminaries. 21518 Authorized Contract Amendment 4 with Neil Schaefer for Engineering Services Design Fee Cost McGregor Avenue Widening.
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64023.
Uh, these orders will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 40520 through 60530.
A motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for, um, resolution for 0-520 through 60-530.
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
405520, 521, 522, 523, 524. Are declaring structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished and/or secured on Dolph, 1040 Dolphin Island Parkway Lot 1, 1040 Dolphin Island Parkway Lot 4, 1040 Dolphin Island Parkway Lot 6, 1050 Woodlawn Drive East, and 1052 Woodlawn Drive West. 58525, 526, and 527 Are declaring weeds noxious and assessing cost for removal of weeds and authorizing removal of weeds, Weed Lean Group 1606, 39, and 1604. 6528 Determine an appropriation to Williamson High School serves a public purpose and approved payment $1,500. 6529 Approval award special bonus to Officer of the Month as part of the Mayor's Incentive Program, Edward McAlpine. 6530 Approval award of $1,000 to Santa Foney Waldinger under the Employee Suggestion Program.
Shall I move?
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 08531 through 21532.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for CIP resolution 08-531 through 21-532.
Second.
Would probably moved to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolution 08531 Approved Purchase Order to Gain Time for Shade Structure for Trinity Gardens. 21532 Authorized Contract of S. Failure LLC for Copeland Cox Tennis Center ADA Improvements.
Go move.
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a pass.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01533 to, through 21541.
Yeah, these resolutions will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Announcements.
Mr. Davis?
No announcements, sir.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. To remind everybody of the meeting at 2 o'clock in this auditorium to meet with utilities, to discuss their updates and any information they'd like to share with this council. Unfortunately, and I'd like to announce that Alabama Power will not have a presence, and I'm hoping to get a written report that I will give to council members or will plan another meeting that allows their attendance as well. Um, on August 4th, there'll be a meeting of the UDC Committee, which is, uh, Councilwoman Gregory and, um, Councilwoman Small and myself as chair, and that's an opportunity for the staff to give us an overview of the upcoming momentum for the UDC codes. And any council member, of course, is urged to join in and also get an update and information from the staff on the planning initiative that our community will be going through in the very near future, hopefully. On August 11th, at 2 o'clock, there'll be a Public Services Committee meeting also, which is CJ Small and Joel Davis, councilmen's, and that is to go over our towing ordinance. We had come very close back, um, before the pandemic in order to get some new language on the books and update the towing, um, ordinance. So I look forward to getting that out to the industry prior to the meeting. Uh, there is a list that the clerk's office has, I believe, of people interested in getting that and also get it placed on the website. We can direct people to read it. And that committee will meet at 2 o'clock again, August 11th, in this, um, council, in the government auditorium. Thank you.
The meeting, the meeting on August 4th, public safety meeting on August 4th is on the roads.
Did, did, did you sign in?
Um, he signed in as good citizen, and, um, he stated that he wanted to, uh, speak on police relations. We have no agenda item on, um, our current agenda, so.
But, but you, you signed in as. Let's, 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 uh, you, you want.
It's a non-agenda. I don't know.
He said they had no agenda out there for him to look at.
Oh, I see.
That's a letter to.
Well, come, come on, come on, sir. Just give, give us your name and your address.
Now, now, Mr. President, I'm opposed to this. We have rules, and if, if, we need to adhere to the rules. If we make exceptions for one person, then we need to make exceptions for everyone.
Well, I have, uh, my name is Gil Lambert. I'm at 254 Lexington Avenue. I'm a cit, uh, citizen of, uh, Mobile, Alabama.
Now, he has a name.
And, uh, first on, on my, which don't have nothing to do with what I wrote on that paper, but since we're talking about safety, if you have people come up and touch this microphone and put on to their face, and he come touch it, and I come touch it, that virus can spread also. So you guys might want to take that into consideration. The microphone up here, it's like me sharing a mask with you. So I'm going to try to speak loud enough for y'all to hear me. You know, I ain't come here to be no bad guy or nothing like that, but I've got a job just as well as you do. And probably once a week, once a month, my boss man roll down on this and give us a eight-shooter, tighten us up, and it seems like the body language that I'm getting, this is my first time coming, but it's like. It's not nobody against nobody. We trying to work together here. And the only thing I'm saying is get out of the pretty super mentality and get into dunker mentality. Everybody should be on the same page. And what I wanted to address was police relations. I have a 95-year-old grandmother, been living in our house all my life, and his policemen in that area don't even know her name. And that's a concern for me because I think policing is more of pulling a little kind of somebody with a bag of wreaths in the pocket. Somebody that, you know, we got to know that's a human. And if I work this beat and I don't see that lady in the yard, and I'm used to seeing them, I know I can go knock on the door and check on them. You know, it's more, it's more for policemen to than just arrest a beauty. And that was one of my concerns, and I wanted to address it and see if maybe we can get back into not so much walking the beat, but sometimes my job is my home. Sometimes I get out to our condition car, walk the neighborhood, learn in the community. So the next time this guy get a call in this dispute, I know that little boy. I know his dad, I know his mom. They gonna accept me as being a police. You know, we felt no police and citizens, black communities in any way, relationship. And this is an issue going on nationwide, but not just here in Mobile. You know, we have to work on police relations in the black community. It's not a secret that, you know, it shouldn't be no elephant in the room, so to speak. This is something we have to address. And I feel like we can work on it and we can be in the competition for these things. Good things like that can take so much fall down road like laws of a crime. And I ain't got citizens that's willing to work with law enforcement to solve crimes. Because what police do is respond to crime. But the citizens can prevent crime. If I can intervene and leave two guys or somebody having an altercation, I may even stop the bus before it happened. Whereas if you guys have this in the tech and out there, this is not in the news. So that was basically what I wanted to talk about. And, uh, this, this is my first time coming, but like far as the rules signing up, if I'm a citizen and you guys are public servants, I can come down here and say y'all work for me, but that's not the approach I'm taking. But in actuality, my taxes that I pay probably be you guys' salary. But I'm not trying to say all you working, you guys do what I say. But I should be able to say what I want to say. It's just five minutes. If this, if this meeting on last hour, so what, y'all just out there shooting now? And it's over with for a whole week. So don't somebody look down on your nose at somebody that's coming down here and wants to make a service. And if it hurt that bad, you can miss and that, but I didn't want to go. So, uh, we need to just work on that, man. Work on police relations in the community, and that way when something happen, and we gonna have no charge for it. And things is trying to get better over time, but you gonna sit on your horse and look down at people like that, then you, you not going, you be unapproaching. Mr. Richardson, I played ball with your son before. I know you before you got into this politics thing, man. And, and I've been back, and I always, just like you guys, I'm trying to intervene. That's me. That's who I am. So when you try to stop somebody from coming up here talking for five minutes, I got a problem with that. What's the problem? This lady been down here on her laptop shopping the whole time. My, my tax dollars came from her to sit on that laptop and shop when everybody's supposed to pay attention to the concerns of the citizens. Now, I read the sign out there. It say cut your electronics off, but I don't know if she's working. But then I looked up and see her shopping on Facebook. That's not bad.
We have rules though.
Thank you. Uh, is, is Mr., is it Mr. Lambert? Mr. Mr. Lambert, uh, I believe you live in my council district, and I'm proud to represent you on the city council. I want to just say for the record that no one has an objection to anyone coming down and speaking on a matter pertinent to City Mobile business. But, but we have rules. The ru, the rules are, just so that we on the same page, that if you want to talk on an item that's a non-agenda item, they, let, let me finish. Let me finish. If you want to talk on an item that's a non-agenda item, then you contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak, and then you would have absolutely no issue. You'd have five, four minutes, and we would sit and listen and engage with you on any subject matter that you would want to talk about. So if you'll see me right after the meeting, I'll make certain that you have the city clerk's number so that you can make that contact. And if you want to come down every week and have commentary on some aspect of City Mobile business, you are welcome. This is a public meeting. We are public officials, but we do have rules. That, that's why there was discussion about whether or not you should speak or not speak because you really didn't sign in. You sign in as good citizen. Well, not, not in, Mr. Mr. Lambert, Mr. Lambert, that's, that's different. That's with the police. This is a public meeting, and so everything that's done is done transparently. So that's why, what, what, I'm, I, we, no back and forth. I'm just letting you know the rules, and if you'll get with me after the meeting, I'll get you that number. Thank you for coming down today. No, sir. It's, it's wide open. I'm trying to let you know how to, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Lambert. No, sir. That, that isn't quite, that's not, Mr. Mr. Lambert, I'm trying hard to let you know the way it's supposed to go. I want to work with you. Thank you for coming down today. Yes, sir. I'm going to help you.
Uh, I, can I, can I comment if it's okay?
Uh, Ms. Rich? Sure.
I understand exactly what you're articulating about the desire to enter, you know, be part of your community by all means. The rules are clear for the council. However, the public's not always aware of what our rules are. And I would like to see, uh, our PR director get some information out there. Maybe tell the media how people can sign in. Get our numbers to our clerk's office. These are public officials. I agree with you 100%. But we have a business to conduct because, uh, we have business before us. Anyone does not have to sign up ahead of time, and the agendas should be out front so people can review them by all means.
And if that was not out front... Let me just finish. That's something that we can correct. It's part of our business of our meeting. And so, anyone does not have to let us know ahead of time when it's an agenda item. They have five minutes to give us all their thoughts on that particular one or two items that is of interest to them, will affect their community, either positive or negative, and they want this council to know. But a non-agenda item, we have to know ahead of time. Because we don't direct this staff. The administration is under the mayor's office. So we have to get permission through the mayor to have people in here to answer those questions on the topic of interest. So if we would have known ahead of time, public safety, perhaps the police chief could have been present, could talk about community initiatives, your ideas are great. And I just think that it's getting the right people to you and that's part of our jobs too. It's not to put you off, it's to make it effective. If you've come out to tell us something, that we would just look at you and say, "We don't have that answer, but the staff can answer." That's why we need to know ahead of time. We have to be prepared. So, again, if you'd like to come down and elaborate on your concerns about policing, you'll get that phone number. But we have to do a better job of letting our constituents know how they can find us to come to us. That's not a problem. We're not hiding from people. We're very public people. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
I think it has already been stated that this is a business meeting. We conduct business every Tuesday. Now, at a community meeting, you can stand up and ask anything you want to about any issue at a community meeting. This... We are transacting the official business of the City of Mobile. And without order, you have chaos. So we have to conduct our meeting orderly because if we don't, we can look forward to chaos. Now, we had a good example. We had Mrs. Irene Anton to sign up to speak about an agenda item. Because we all get the agenda on Thursday. And by Tuesday, we are well aware of what's on this agenda. We would research it up and down, we know. But for people who want to speak on non-agenda items, they're required to put in the Thursday, at least the Thursday prior. So we would know what it is that they're gonna come down here and speak on because it's not on this agenda. For instance, Ms. Anton wanted to know about striping. If Ms. Anton had signed up on Thursday to speak about getting her street striped, I would have gotten in charge with the folks in charge of striping and we would have had some information to give her. I don't... I didn't have no idea she was gonna come down here to speak about striping. Let's say for instance, that someone comes down here and asks me and say, "When was the last time you researched my street?" And I said, "I don't know." Because it's... Uh, 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 you can't debate me.
One second, Mr. Lambert.
Uh, uh, you can't debate me.
Mr. Lambert, Mr. Lambert...
Uh, uh, the council rules...
Hold one second, Mr. Lambert. Come on, Mr. Lambert. Hold one second. And he's got the floor. And we appreciate...
But you can't come down here, you can't do what you're doing. It's not permitted. No, you can't do it.
Ms...
Brother...
Mr. Lambert? Hold one second, Mr. Lambert? Mr. Lambert? Mr. Lambert, wait, hold it, hold it, Mr. Lambert? Hold it, Mr. Lambert? Now, I've asked that you would wait and meet with me after the meeting so that I could talk with you. I want you to get the... Hold it, you can't say that, Mr. Lambert. He has the floor now.
And, you know, now, Mrs. Lambert's leaving, on his way out, I want him to know that nobody in my community had a horse. Said I'm on a high horse. I was raised up on a mule. We had a mule and a wagon. I was a grown man.
Mr. Lambert, please, please stop that, please. Yes, sir. Mr. Lambert, please, please cease and desist. But you're out of order, Mr. Lambert.
You're out of order, Mr. Lambert.
You're out of order. But this isn't the proper place for that conversation, Mr. Lambert. That's what we're telling you. Finish your comments, Mr. Richardson.
Adjourn, adjourn.
Sir, we adjourned the meeting?
Yeah, just adjourned.
Is that a motion, second? End of discussion? The meeting is adjourned.
That's wrong that I got to give him a head up on what I want to come talk to him about.